Who wants to go on my computer?
Yeah.
Hello, Albert. Yeah, I know. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the October 7th, 2014 Village of New Pauls Planning Board Meeting. Members present this evening are John Litten, Michael Zierler, and Rich Stephens. My name is Maurice Whitman, I'm the chair. George Rodenhause is our attorney. And our secretary is Brogan Rose O'Donnell. The village planner, director of planning, Brendan Smith is there, as is Thomas Rocco, our village board liaison. Thank you all for being here. We have three ZBA referrals on the agenda. They are ZBA items 14-12, -13, and -14. We'll take them in numerical order. The first is a variance to relocate a sign at 10 H Church Street, which is, I forgot the name of the business, the floral florist. Mr. Calucci is wanting to move the sign from on the building, right, so flags on the building to the street. And we have pictures that... You took these pictures, right, Brendan? Very nice. Okay. Would anybody in the audience like to speak to this? No. Okay, so what members of the board would like to say something about this or ask any question?
I mean, I don't have a problem with it. Brendan brings up the point about it not being seen from one direction. But if anybody's driving that way up the street, they're going the wrong way.
The wrong way, yeah.
So...
Airfall.
They shouldn't see it from that direction.
What about rearview mirrors?
And I would like to see that street drive. I think it's a very nice tucked away opportunity.
Yeah.
Way to see them put the business in there. If this is what helps them, in favor of it.
This is Zierler.
I'll second all that.
I agree, yeah.
George, do you have any opinion? Okay. All right, I feel fine about it. Brendan, do you have anything else to add, slightly before you go to us? Okay, I have a motion to...
A move we recommend to the ZBA, they approve this variance?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I said aye too, and some of my best self, thank you. Okay. We have ZBA 14-13. Mr. Butler wants a variance. Brendan, did you send us something about this also?
I did.
I'm sorry, is it part of this packet?
It is.
Okay, good.
The agenda one.
I'm sorry?
The same one.
It's in here, okay, good. Sorry, I didn't get to see this first. 14, 13, this is 14. Is Mr. Butler here?
Are you?
Come on up. Right. Okay, so... Have a seat, please. So can you summarize your story for us?
Sure. So I converted my garage a few years ago on 43 Center Street. Originally as a workshop studio. And now I would like to have it as a residence for myself. I've rented out my house. One-bedroom house. On 3.4 acres, kind of meets everything else. And would like to reside myself in the garage for six months a year, perhaps. I have another residence and daughter in Arizona. I spend, I'll leave for Arizona actually next Tuesday after this next meeting here. And spend six months there, and I'd like to be able to, I have another daughter here.
Right.
So I'd like to be able to live in this area. The only way I can do that, I guess, is to rent my house.
Yeah.
And keep up with the taxes, basically.
Right.
I'd rather live in my house.
Okay.
So that's basically it. I mean, I've kind of put about 20,000, you know, the garage has been converted. It's there for viewing. It's basically me and a couple in my house.
Right. Have you seen the memo from our...
No. Matter of fact, I didn't even know this, I was supposed to be here tonight, until I checked today about the meeting next Tuesday.
Right.
I thought I was...
It's technically not required for...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
The ZBA is where the action happens. But if you're here...
Okay.
We are charged with giving our recommendation to the ZBA.
I see, for next week.
On variances, yes.
Okay.
So that's it. But I thought if you're here, we can hear from you.
Terrific.
But definitely come next week.
Yeah, okay. Well, I'm glad I'm here tonight.
Okay, so Brendan, would you prefer that I read this? Or would you like to just summarize it?
It's up to you.
About, I'll read it, I'll just... So it says here, "The applicant requesting to convert his existing garage from utility slash art studio to a single-family dwelling requires a variance for front and side yard setbacks. Existing garage is 13 feet 11 inches and 2 inches from the front and side property lines and would require 10 foot 1 inch and 12 foot 4 inch variances, respectively. Relevantly, the garage is also located just a few feet from the neighboring house to the east." And based on, well, she said that she would be leery to grant a variance for residents so close to neighboring houses, but the village code we intend in this district is that homes be 25 feet apart. Village Code 21217C permits only one primary, one or two family structures be constructed per parcel in all residential districts, while this code does specify that applicable buildings be proposed to be constructed unless they do not apply in the case of an existing garage. It seems obvious the intent of the ordinance, that only one residential structure be allowed per building lot. So that's from our planning and code perspective. George, do you have any opinion about this?
Well, it's up to the ZBA, different variants.
Yes, of course.
And...
I mean, from a planning perspective, that's all we could...
From a planning perspective, the issue is more of a use variance than an area variance. Use variance meaning that, in my opinion, is a use variance in a sense that you only have one principal dwelling, or one dwelling unit per property, and this, because we made two dwellings per home. So it's not a dimensional variance so much as changing what zoning allows in terms of the use of the property. So it's a more difficult threshold for zoning board to meet. And the threshold is you have to show that it's unusual hardship and having the zoning applied the way it's supposed to apply. You have to show that because of something unique about the property, you couldn't have, you couldn't only have one. I mean, it's hard to show. It's the bottom line. It's hard to show, the threshold to show to get a zoning variance, as opposed to an area variance. That's all I can say.
Were there permits for the original conversion of the garage to the studio?
Yes.
And I have questions as to how... It's always been my understanding that we have to provide onsite parking. So by removing the garage parking, is there other onsite areas to park the cars?
Well, there's room in, the residence has room for two cars, but...
Behind the building?
No, in the driveway.
That's actually true.
Good.
So the problem I see is that there's a disagreement within the department. And so Mr. Butler properly did what he was supposed to do because the building inspector determined that by, interpreted 21217C to say that it was allowed because it is a garage and conversion, and then it is an area variance, you know, it's an area variance. So...
Well, you're saying, the person that is allowed, that's what I'm seeing.
But doesn't this come back to us for site plan? If there's a conversion and change in use? This wouldn't just be a ZBA issue, is what I'm saying. Because now we have to look at the parking, we have to look at...
So even though we can...
It's the same type of residence. Has that changed for me yet, and the zoning laws require...
No, but parking would kick in, you're right. Because you would need three parking spaces for each residence, which would be six parking spaces total. And anything with more than, with four or more parking spaces requires planning board.
Why is it three spaces for a residence?
Per unit?
It's, yeah, it's three spaces per unit, up to three bedrooms. And then over three bedrooms, one parking space for each additional bedroom.
So even if the house isn't three bedrooms, it still requires, that's the...
It might be two, it might be two bedrooms per three units. Two parking spots, sorry, per three bedrooms. But it would still kick it to planning board, even if it only required four.
Yeah, that would require, and that goes to planning, but also that requires an area variance, the number of spaces.
That would require, if your argument is correct, a use variance, an area variance, and a parking area variance.
Yeah.
Boy, I can't park in the street?
You need enough parking spaces on your property.
For residence?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, plus you removed the parking places by converting the garage as part of the problem. So, you know, we have to show that we can put it back, that's why if there's room there, there's room. Or the backyard, could you get to the backyard from the street?
I mean, you can, but the backyard is the yard. I mean, I wouldn't want to park there. I mean, you know, I, you know... I mean, basically, I've been here probably 15 years, paid my taxes. Jeez, I would think I'd be able to park in the street, even though there's no room anymore to park in the street with the college population. But I, you know... I haven't asked much.
I mean, I'm sympathetic to your situation. My two concerns are that we have a disagreement within your department, and I don't want to put the applicant in a position where he's being asked to go to the ZBA for one thing, and then being told that there are additional variances of concern in sort of this unofficial, you know, in this kind of piecemeal way. But my concern with making this allowable change to your, you're recommending this, is that it might be fine while you're doing it, but then if somebody, you sell this, now we have a property in a residential district that has two residences where we typically would only allow one for the same residence. And I don't know whether we have any recourse once we allow this, if we recommend it.
Trouble with the property.
Yeah, trouble, yeah.
It's not in the way the owner has to do with the property.
Right, so that's my hesitation. It's not your situation per se, but...
I understand, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's the gist of almost everything we do, that we're working with property issues, not owner issues or tenant issues. And so anything that we do affects the property, not...
Not in person.
And the alternative is, that is allowed, and correct me if I err on any of this, is that within your primary residence, since you are the owner and an occupant for a significant portion of the year, you could have a second apartment in there that would allow you to live there, and I don't know if that's feasible, given the size of your house.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, why would the accessory apartment law...
The house is tiny. The house is less than 1,000 square feet. One of the oldest houses on Center Street. The lot is 3.4 acres.
Point 0.3.
Point 3. Point 3, 4.
3.4 acres, every developer in New Pauls would be down here knocking on your bell.
Then you could...
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not that. And...
So, yeah, why couldn't this be...
Why couldn't it go into the accessory apartment?
Accessory apartments should be in the...
It has to be in the same building.
Same building.
Are you sure of that?
So we've actually...
Are you sure of that?
We had let some builders in the past build a greaseway between two buildings.
And I think our current building department will be allowed that.
Okay. I'm not saying this plan or building apartment did it, but it has been done.
Yeah, well, I actually considered that myself.
I think it'd be easier to do a variance for accessory apartment than it would be to have a variance for just two families.
Parking would still be an issue.
Would still be an issue.
Yeah, but I agree with you from the ZBA's point of view. Because then, from a planning point of view, what if some, in the future, you dispose of this property, then we don't have two primary residences on that property.
You have a primary residence and an accessory...
With an accessory apartment, which means that it can only be used as an accessory apartment if the owner's living on the property. From a planning point of view, that's out of preference. Is that...
I mean, my 15 minutes of glory was to be in the New York Times Sunday Edition for the Village's accessory apartment law that I wrote with Virginia Island. That's why I'm kind of surprised that it's, we have limited to be within the structure. But it could be, it's been a long time, and I've gotten old.
I believe that one structure per lot is a fairly new law.
Right.
It's older than I am, but not harsh.
Yeah, I understood you could have two if it was over a third of an acre.
It was up to three.
Yeah.
Those cases were up.
And I'm just over that. And, I mean, the combined square footage of both, whether that matters or not is, probably 1,400 square feet in both the main house and the garage. I mean, the main house is tiny. I lived in it for a dozen years. And it's, you know, I mean...
So do we, if we, can we make a recommendation?
Well, where's the accessory apartments? I'm just trying to find that.
Looking for it.
We'll say it's in...
It's not defined, is it?
It's not defined.
No, it's not even, it's not listed in a lot of the use charts.
It might have disappeared.
I mean, accessory uses are there, but customer uses, that'll, that's not...
It's called something else nowadays.
I would argue that if it's allowed, then those two laws contradict each other, and the more restrictive would be the law.
Accessory apartment above the first floor is prohibited. I think in RF1 district, sorry, is RF2?
RF2.
It's RF2. Same.
Also, as far as the building department disagreeing with itself, that's not a bad thing. We've actually discussed that today, that that's why the ZBA exists, so that they can decide what they think, who's right, and then we can move forward from there.
That's fine. My only comment about that was that we were pointing out from this table that the actual application for a variance was different, and I didn't want this applicant or any future applicants to be put in this position where they're applying for one thing, and then another board is saying something different because then it's application.
Well, because that could happen anytime, when, right? I mean, I don't think that's a...
Okay.
So what we're saying then is that what he would need, if it were two residences, would be a use variance rather than area variance, and then he would need a variance for the parking. But the possible alternative is to have him ask for a variance for an accessory apartment?
Here's something I find.
I thought...
But we're saying now that that doesn't...
That may not even exist in our zoning anymore, John.
Section 21220, accessory buildings and uses. I didn't read it yet, but I just found it.
I think they changed the name for accessory apartments, something else.
This is E-code, so I don't know if it's the same as...
Yeah, which allows you to have a small apartment in the house.
2121, sorry?
Uh, 21220?
It's larger than the parcel, that's.
Well, I mean...
I don't have a street home in the village.
Is there any restriction on square footage?
I mean, from my old memory here...
Could I, could I put an apartment, my house is, the house there is less than 1,000 square feet. It's 950 square feet, perhaps. So technically, could I put a corner of that house and make it an apartment for me? And be okay?
Well, that's what we're, a little bit, that's what we're concerning ourselves with here about accessory.
No.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
A 212.
There's nothing wrong with sharing your house, but...
No, but I mean, that sounds like Chinatown to me.
Accessory, accessory building and uses is, there's plenty of that.
Are you close to me a little bit?
Probably not.
Threat of... This is Brogan Park. It's general, it's not a accessory apartment. It doesn't have accessory structures, and...
I think we have to look in the art to...
Yeah.
When I purchased that house, the basement was rented out.
The basement was rented out?
The basement was rented out, it was an apartment.
So it was only 12?
No. But, I mean, just for, the basement was rented out. It wasn't legal, but it was rented out, it was, it was, it was a bathroom there, it was a kitchen there. It was, it's about barely six foot high. There was, that, yeah, and then, and then the main house was, you know, there was about eight students in it, so... I bought it for 79,000, I put probably that much into it, and I lived there alone for 12, 13 years. So, and I mean, that stuff is all over my neighborhood. The stuff I just described, I mean, I'm not gonna blow the whistle, we all know a college town is, but...
George, correct me if I'm wrong. What, our purpose tonight is to respond to the application that is before the ZBA. We'll be here by ZBA next week. And I'm happy to work with Mr. Butler to try to figure this out in another venue, but I think tonight all we can do really is act on giving a recommendation to the ZBA.
And that's the planning decision. You know, we can't go, we can't recommend any change in the in the building department's determination, which is that 21217C doesn't apply because other way he reads the term constructive. The verb there is, a lot may be improved for residential use, provided that one principal building shall be constructed in each lot. Instead of saying, not constructing, it's a very...
So that's a bad word.
It's a very unusual reading, but anyway.
Yeah.
I'm sure he's trying to be respectful here, but the... That's done, so that's the ZBA issue, it's not the planning board.
That's right.
So then, if you switch over to accessory buildings and uses, no accessory building shall be located closer to the street than the street wall of the principal dwelling, which is not the case here, so that would be an area variance. It's a lot easier to do because that's just saying setback of five feet instead of 25 feet. It doesn't say accessory apartment, the only conflict would be in the use chart where it says, no apartment is permitted in the RF2 district above the first floor.
Above the first floor?
But would that be above the first floor of the primary residence?
No, but the only apartment listed is apartment above the first floor, which other districts like B1, B2 is permitted. But that's, that is obviously for the buildings. Commercial buildings in B1, B2, it doesn't apply. But there isn't any accessory apartment listed in the...
I wonder if we could ever have a meeting where we don't find real problems with the code?
Accessory apartments are really common thing to have in codes.
Yeah.
It says, "No accessory building shall be located closer to the principal building than 12 feet or a distance equal to the height of the accessory building?"
I got a big grin from DHCR to build those houses with it.
I remember seeing something about accessory, I think it was, was it called accessory apartments? But something that allowed someone to have another apartment in their main dwelling.
You couldn't add an extra front door?
Right, right, right.
Yeah, yeah.
And that'd be parking requirements met, but that's not what's going on here. This is a separate issue, it's a separate building, it's not, it isn't the same thing, so...
No, the thing with the accessory apartment was that tied to a deed restriction. So that when the owner sold, the accessory apartment disappeared. Which, if this was those kind of, one of those situations where we want to see it disappear where Mr. Butler's done...
Then that would be ideal.
Then that would be the way to go.
Yeah.
But, I don't see it even being a zoning anymore, I don't...
That's bizarre.
Well, you could just make a recommendation based on your planning consideration along lines of... I mean, putting the individual situation aside, if it makes sense to have a, to allow second dwelling unit on a property, two feet, whatever, it's the property line, sideline. I mean, the patient's not great for...
Hang so close to the other house, which is key.
The side yard is special, and it's just, for issues like that. And you could say, like I am. I mean, it's just hard to give a recommendation other than on planning, than with good planning, because it makes sense to have a...
Did Richard's resident say this? Richard said, "Would it dispose of any special fire codices?"
It does.
It does.
How near it is, New York?
Yeah.
Explosion-proof windows. But where do you find out what they cost?
I don't...
John don't know.
Well...
I don't, I don't have anything to recommend to the ZBA, because I, you know...
Well, I agree with Brendan's point that it's very, it's too close to another residence to have someone living a few feet away. I think that's, I think that's less than good planning. And I don't, I don't know, George, what else can we, can we say here? I mean, it seems, I think we have to let ZBA do what they're gonna do. Now, they might have objections to the type of variance that's been applied for, and and they'll send Mr. Butler back for a...
Well, that's the thing, they have the authority to disagree with the building department, as Brendan said.
Right.
That's their role.
And they can interpret the code, and we can't, so...
That's the next round.
Next week.
ZBA, yeah.
That's right.
So...
How much is the distance between these two buildings? I can't tell, I'm not between the property line, but between the buildings.
Between the garage and the building?
Yeah. And they were...
Close.
About three feet or something like that?
It couldn't be done under current building.
No, it's, it's not three feet, it's probably more like, I mean, the line might be three feet.
Yeah.
The property line. The building's probably 10, 12.
The other one, the other one was obviously built very close to the line, too.
Yeah, exactly. The other house is...
The other house?
Variance very, very close to the line.
And it used to be tiny, double in size of the house.
Yeah, and, well, for all that, I mean, I don't know. I mean, they built close to the line, apparently, too.
I mean, you couldn't do to your garage what you did under that former... Under current code, you couldn't do to your garage what you'd already done, made it to a shop studio.
That mean the work that's changed in the last year. That mean the work that's changed in the last year.
In the last two years.
Last two years.
Well, that, that varies.
The fire codes couldn't make that.
Can you proceed yet?
Yeah.
Yeah. But you can recommend approval, disapproval, and make a recommendation. That is.
Well, you know, I don't, as it stands, I don't see how we could approve it, I don't have any, um, I don't have any way that we could say that we approve the application, because we can't, or I, I don't think we can.
Based on just the line?
Well, based on, on the discrepancy between the type of variance that we think is required and the proximity to the next residence, and the parking, and, I mean, it, it all seems like, like bad planning. And, um.
Well.
I mean, I understand why you, you would want it.
It wasn't planned.
No, I understand that, but, you know.
It was necessity.
Yes.
You know, I'm just thinking of.
We're using planning in different ways, and.
It's just an alternative.
Yeah.
I mean, and, I, I, I just thought the, the issue was, the, um.
The distance.
The closeness.
Well, that is an issue, yeah.
You know.
One of several.
And I, I understand it.
If you do what the county board does, something actually say, uh, cannot recommend approval, but leave it in discretion of the zoning board.
Well, that is our third alternative, right?
Yeah.
But, okay, actually say you cannot recommend approval, but leave it in discretion of the zoning board, that is saying disapproval.
Well, you know, I would like to, to protect the property, the use of the property in the future, and I'd like to protect the neighboring owners. Uh, and not allow something that will be a problem for current and future residents. But I don't, I don't know, I, I don't have the words, which is why I pay the big bucks, George, to, to say, um.
Well, it's here in the. So what'd you just say, you said that.
Well, you know, what, what I. I am, I am not saying this for the board, I'm saying it for myself, that, that I think that the planning issues that are rated by the application would lead us to, would lead us to want to disapprove the, the application. However, I think that the ZBA has to determine whether this is a use variance or an area variance, and if they want to grant setback variances, that's their prerogative, they can do, they can do many things, but I don't, as the application stands now, I don't see how we can approve it, and I'd rather not do the soft approval by saying, you know, you know, you do what you want, we're, we're not gonna approve it. I, I would rather not do that, I'd rather do our job and.
Well, the other way to continue it is to look at the, the criteria for area variance and, which, or for use range, say that we don't find it satisfies the criteria for either area range or use range, because you don't find it, whatever, uh, you know, compatibility in the neighborhood, that sort of thing, the second residence on the property.
And is that our charge as a?
Sure.
Okay, good.
Your recommendation is, is, can be couched in any way at all, but it is basically a planning issue that you're raising, so to look at.
I don't, yeah, I don't particularly want to waste a lot of time either, you know, going to the next.
Well, you're talking about a couple of hours.
I mean, the going, I mean, if the zoning board is gonna just squash it.
We don't know what they're gonna do.
Yeah, oh, it's all. The, the, the only troubling.
Really, no matter what we say, they can do what they want.
Oh, okay. The, the troubling thing is, I mean, with a lot of these things too, I mean, in terms of this town and village, I mean, there's, there's a house, you know, two hundred feet from me, three hundred feet from me with, you know, probably ten college students with eight cars.
I live next to and across the street from the same thing, but that's not why we're here tonight, sir, I mean, I, I understand the problem.
No, but I mean, I'd like to try to make sense of it to myself, I mean, I, I'm, you know, I'm a taxpayer, I don't get anything, I don't have any kids, I, I'm a single guy, I mean, I'm good for eight grand a year, times, you know, I'm, you know, times two, twelve, fifteen years here, and, you know, I'm not allowed to park in the street.
No, you, you certainly can park in the street.
Yeah, well, I hope so.
Haven't gotten a ticket for parking there, huh?
Well, as a matter of fact, I have.
Oh, sorry. I would throw the.
But it's just, uh, it's, it's all kind of pretty vague to me, how, how some, how some, yeah, how some, I mean, there's, there's half a dozen places in my neighborhood that I'm, I'm sure would be blown up if they were to sit here.
Yeah.
And so it's, it troubles me, as, as a guy that kind of has, has lived here, wants to live here, wants to try to live here, but.
Michael, you were gonna say something.
Well, given, given the sentiment here, I, I think it's, as I said earlier, that it's not so much, it's, within the building department, there is a disagreement about the interpretation of this, and as Brendan pointed out, that's fine, and the ZBA can, can help, that's their job to help make that decision. Personally, what I'd like to do is make no recommendation on the actual application in front of us in terms of its use variance, personally. That's less of concern to me, but I would like to propose that we forward to the zoning board of appeals a consideration of that they review the possibility of an accessory apartment approach to this as opposed to, um, variance for the, the distance, uh, as opposed to a use variance. And I say in that right here, and I'm mangling this.
Except that we're not finding accessory apartment in the zoning, Mike, huh?
Well, I would leave that to them. Honestly, I mean, I just.
It's gonna have to be researching it tomorrow.
This to the, not only accessory apartment, not there, but say it's in a separate building, is it?
Well, that's, that would be the variable, well, that would be the variance, that would be the thing that we have to consider.
The other thing we do is just say recommend disapproval based on a memorandum from Brendan White.
I mean, it only takes, it only takes a lot of us to, if we don't vote unanimously, it's my understanding that we don't.
Prove it.
Right?
No, no.
Approval doesn't have to be unanimous, oh, okay, sorry.
You could write it as sending a meeting, it would explore.
So, anyway, that's, that's my position, this, or this data, of course.
Okay, well, um, I, I don't know, I mean, to, to say that, um, based on the opinion recommendation from Brenda, um, we, we would, we would disapprove the, uh, we would recommend disapproval of the variance application. Uh, that's, that's one thing, and it's simple, but, um, I'd like to give some ideas. I, see, I don't want to solve the problem, I don't, I don't want to give legal advice or direct that to anybody, that's, you know, if everyone wants to do that individually, you know, they can do that, but I think, I think the ZBA is the place where he has to go and get, get some relief, get some action, I don't see that we can.
So then, so then we'd have to have no recommendation or a positive recommendation?
No, we could say, we can say that we recommend disapproval, and the ZBA does not have to honor that.
But, and if you provide a reason, your, your reason so far has been that it's contrary to the principles of the zoning law to have two residences on one lot in the R one, or R two district.
Right, and, and it's proximity to the next residence, and it's lack of parking, I mean, there are all kinds of, uh.
Well, I, I thought legally, I was allowed to have two separate residences.
No, where'd you get that?
Well, I thought if it was over point three, three acres, you, you could have two.
Have you heard that, no? You told the population department?
Yeah.
Recently?
I, uh, Mr., what's his name?
Well, could have had my change to the city over.
Yeah, exactly.
Could have been that.
You mean this letter that said, because it's not a new building.
Yeah, existing.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's over point three, three.
Well, that's not the issue, the, the issue here is.
Well, I, I understand, well, either is.
There's no exception, that's one thing, but if the overall purpose is clearly stated in zoning, which is not to have two residences on one lot, two new residences on one lot, the planning board is authorized to say, for that reason, we recommend disapproval. Now, if the zoning board wants to go ahead and find a way they can get around that, they can do that.
That's their job, really.
Yeah, uh, but from a planning perspective, the intent of the zoning law is clear, not to allow new, new construction, uh, which the building department held was, uh, this is not new construction, but as Brendan said in her memo, the clear intent is there not to have now created two residences on one lot in this R two district, or actually throughout the town, throughout the villages. It's actually not just for this district, and, and the fact is that there isn't adequate parking, and then there isn't, uh, we can't find any authority for accessory apartment, I mean, you could say five things, you could say nothing.
Well, what I would say is, I will, I will move to recommend disapproval based on the, um, memo from Brenda and, um, and, uh, with the ZBA, do their work?
That's a partial notification.
No, I'm sorry, no, that's, at the, at the end, so the, the motion is based on Brenda's memorandum. So I'd like a second to that, if there is one. If there is, okay, here, here no second, so that fails, anybody else wanna make a motion? So we take the.
Okay, yeah, I mean, my, my feeling is, I would like to have some time to study this a little bit more.
Well, he has.
Well, we don't have, we don't have that luxury, right?
Well, this is a, we have to do something.
And I think there's an answer in there somewhere, and I hate giving up without at least exploring that, but.
Rich, we have a recommendation you guys have to make.
So Michael, you said no recommendation on the requested variance, um, and have the ZBA consider accessory apartment, that's what you said, but can we just?
I did say that, and I, I can offer it in the form of a motion, if you'd like.
Would you please?
Uh, make a motion that we make no recommendation on the application, uh, for Mr. Butler's, um, property on Center Street, but that we do indicate that from a planning perspective, um, that the ZBA consider uh, an accessory apartment as a, as an alternative.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Might propose a change to it before we finish up?
Fail.
And it fails.
You could throw something else, okay?
I would go along the same theme, but I think we should deny the application.
Or, might you make a motion?
And, and that we move at the planning board to consider the accessory apartment.
The zoning board, yes.
The zoning board, yes.
Make a motion, Rich.
I can't, because I'm so confused right now.
You have to.
I would just take Michael's, I would take Michael's, and I would say, instead of, I would say we would disapprove.
Stop and scratch, please.
I can disapprove of it.
I recommend we disapprove the application, but strongly suggest the ZBA consider looking at the accessory apartment regulations.
Whether it can be approved as accessory apartment?
Yes.
Do you need to give a reason for disapproval, like the?
I don't think so.
No, no reason, okay.
Only because, I, I, I just, I don't see how, we are a compliance board, it's not a compliance.
Right.
Did you agree to say whether it can be approved as accessory apartment, whether it can be?
I can't, because I have to do the research.
I mean, your motion.
I'm just telling them, please look at it, because I don't know that, I, sitting here, I can't do that.
Sitting here, we can't tell them to look at it either, Count.
We can ask them.
Just letting them look at, that's the trouble, that's why I'm trying to get you to say, so, look at, do it as accessory apartment, say whether it can be done.
Oh, oh, okay, oh, I'm losing my language for sure.
So whether it can be.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so, so can you restate that unless Brendan?
George stated it so much better.
So we're gonna recommend disapproval of the application.
But, go ahead.
Recommend disapproval.
George.
Uh, but request that the zoning board of appeals consider whether it may be approved as accessory apartment.
Correct.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, any further discussion, any questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll say aye. Good luck, Mr. Butler, hope things work out for you.
Thank you, sorry.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, given this discussion, I'd ask the, the planner to please, uh, research this program and bring it to the village board for a consideration for changing the code, and after you've had an opportunity to do some sort of reflection, I would like a recommendation from the planning board concerning this as well.
To change what code?
The accessory apartment, uh, component, or accessory use component, so that it's clearer as to the, uh, accessory apartment option that evidently used to be in the code in several places. I know that I have an accessory apartment in my home.
Well, it's, it's quite amazing to me, as I've traveled around the village for the last twelve years and seen the living occupancies that, you know, this hasn't been nailed down, and.
You should come to all our meetings.
No, no, I mean, I've seen, I see guys living in garages and parking lots, and, I mean, I've been here, you know, I, I just, I thought it would be kind of, I, I thought this would have been presented many, many times, maybe it's because it hasn't been presented, maybe because people just do it, maybe.
Well, that happens.
That's the way to do it, but I mean, if, if one was to crack down on that, I think half the population in New Pulse would be out of town. So it's a little disappointing, a little disturbing, but one more, thanks for your time.
Night, Mr. Butler, thank you. Okay, the next item is sign variance for county physical therapy at eighty-three North Chestnut. Is the applicant or someone like them here to discuss this? Does anything? Okay, so, um, we have a picture of the current sign as it was, how long ago was this, Brendan, remember?
Two thousand and twelve, that picture was taken.
Yeah. And the proposed sign. What are the dimensions of the proposed sign?
Five and a half, five and a half feet.
It seems to be much larger than the different one, yeah. So I don't know that I can evaluate how big this sign is, it looks like it's something like.
Say two and a half by four.
I think even less than that, because the one-way sign is certainly no more than two feet and so, but, but whatever. Certainly less than half the size of.
It's a wide angle lens.
Yes, it is, yeah, that's right, because this sign is about a quarter the size of the building. Yeah, that's right, because this sign is about a quarter the size of the building. Okay, so... And the recommendation or the, um, summary from, oh, the recommendation from the county planning board came in this week, and their required modification was that, um, if this is approved, this modification should include that, uh, should the village install sidewalks along the frontage of this property, the freestanding sign is to be removed or placed in a location that will not obstruct pedestrian traffic. And I know they said it at the meeting, it doesn't say so here, but it should be, um, at the owner's expense. Now, I don't know if that's, uh, implied here, Brenda, could you? Yeah, thank you.
It says such times the village should look for the installation of sidewalk along the frontage. It doesn't say who's going to pay.
Yeah, at the meeting, they did say that, but I don't know what to do with this side. No, if the county, if, if someone puts in sidewalks, this appears to be on the sidewalk line.
I see.
And therefore, the applicant or the owner should, at his expense, or her expense, relocate or remove the sign, so that it doesn't block pedestrian traffic on the sidewalk.
But the sidewalk is at town, village expense.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all I mean.
Okay, so, and did we... Thought I saw something from...
Brenda's memo.
Bren, yes. Applicants requesting a five points, five point, five foot, six inch by five foot, six inch sign. Relocate a five feet from the street encroaching into the required fifteen yard, fifteen foot front yard setback. Brenda's main concern here is that the sidewalk ends at the parcel adjacent to the south, leaving the grassy area next to the curb for pedestrians to walk. By locating the sign in this grassy area, pedestrians will be required to either walk in the parking lot, which cars are designated to be, or walk into the road, either option is not ideal, to put it mildly, is my, uh... Okay, so... What do you think, fellows, Mr. Stephens?
Well, I'm gonna heart back to my old favorite, I think every commercial piece that's either developed or redeveloped should have a sidewalk put in by the developer. Heart back to my old days of Walkway.
I agree with that.
To go back to that. So to put a sign in an area where there should be a sidewalk is against anything I would vote for.
All right, and how about the size of it, do you have a problem with the size?
I don't have a problem with the side, given the district that's down there. I mean, for the most part, that area down there has car dealerships and gas stations, and and that building being set back as far as it is, and the clientele that it deals with, now that I'm dealing with physical therapy a whole lot, having it be able to be seen from the roadway is not such a bad idea. But blocking a sidewalk is...
Mr. Zerla.
I have no problem with the sign going up towards the street. Knowing the history of the discussions between the planning board and the property owner, trying to get a sidewalk there, I wouldn't hold up this sign for something that might happen in the future.
Right, I agree.
Would prefer to say, yes, you can do this now, and if in the future, let them know that I would agree with the county, they would have to move the sign.
What about Brenda's comment about pedestrians walking?
Uh, from looking at the site, I think that people could walk around the sign and stay on the grass.
And what about alternative of moving the sign five feet in further toward the building?
Um, if...
Is there room?
If they can do that without...
Well, not in the grass, I suppose.
You mean, take a closer and... They can, I have no objection to that, if it meets their needs, but from what I can see, based on the sign that was previously there, that it's gonna be in more or less the same location.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, it didn't block sightlines, it was easy enough to get in and out of that place, and so I don't think that it's necessary.
Okay.
It's okay.
Mr. Litten?
Uh, five feet from the street is about where the sign is now, I don't have a problem with the size of it. I think it's a good idea to try to, well, to put in a note that if and when a sidewalk is built, that the sign will have to be removed. We tried, did we try negotiating with the, the property owner to put in a sidewalk, is that what you're saying? You might say that?
Uh, years ago, when the building that's under discussion here was being converted from a, an unused building garage into a, um, a mixed-use building, at that time, the planning board, um, had conversations with the property owner about putting a sidewalk in.
So putting a sidewalk in would probably be the, the village's responsibility at this point?
Or some future tenant or owner or something.
Yeah, good to say.
Yes.
Well, I, I agree with what the county says, I think that it's reasonable.
Okay, well, the county, yeah, and, and this recommendation actually went to the ZBA, so we don't have to do anything. But, okay, who would like to make a motion?
It didn't go to the ZBA yet.
It, it was addressed to the ZBA.
Oh, right, it'll be on their...
It's addressed to Ms. Silver.
Silver.
Okay, who would like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we, uh, recommend approval of this application from the ZBA.
I'll second it.
Uh, any discussion? Okay, uh, vote please, all in favor?
Aye.
Nate.
I vote Nate also. Any other motion? George is gassing.
Is it a cold night?
Really?
I thought there was a breeze.
I just have a quick question, in comparison to the revised sign that's on the map, is the, which isn't five split by five split, will the five split be taking up that full grass curb, almost disabling people from walking around it? If this sign is five...
If it were to stay at that level, it would come up to about here.
I see, okay.
But if it stayed there, it would go back...
When I looked at it, I was at the pizza joint nearby, and I looked at it, and it looked like it was gonna take most of that area.
That's what I thought, it was going down there.
And, and that's the basis on which I don't, I don't like its intrusion.
It's a big sign.
Yeah. So, oh, I will make a motion to recommend this approval based on its, uh, size and location in a pedestrian area.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, nothing happens, no recommendation.
Can we recommend that they have a smaller sign?
That's not, I don't think that's our, uh, I don't think that's our thing.
Okay, so he's voting on the application as it is, okay.
The only question we put at the ZBA is to approve or disapprove, so...
Right.
So your recommendation has some things to do with it.
Okay, so, no recommendation is the recommendation. Okay. Ready, Bren?
Ready.
We have a district known as R1. We have a map coming out.
We made a map?
So here's our R1 district, Hunt, Qview, Taylor, and Cooper, um, and...
Now, is that the only R1 we have?
This house is also R1, and, and Floyd Niffen's newly annexed property, which has an R1 placeholder, but the board doesn't intend to keep that. So these are all the built-out buildings in the R1 district. Right now, the R1 setbacks are, um, required fifty feet front yard, twenty-five rear, and twenty side, without going on people's property, the only one I can really measure is front yard, um, through GIS. So I went through and approximately measured all the houses. There's zero houses out of forty-seven that meet the required setbacks in this district. My thought is fifty feet is too large for a village setting, that's a big setback.
How many meet the twenty-five?
Most of them.
I don't have that information in front of me, um, however, the average setback is twenty-one point, twenty-one feet, four inches. The minimum setback is eleven feet, and the maximum setback is thirty-nine.
What was the average?
Um, the average is twenty-one point, uh, twenty-one, I don't know, it's either twenty-one point four or twenty-one feet, four inches, because I...
It's close enough.
Yeah, it's unclear what I wrote there. The required lot size is probably accurate, the required lot size is point three-four-four acres, and right now, the required, um, there are sixteen parcels that are too small, but most of them are good with that. So I, and the village board has asked that you all discuss what the setbacks should be in this district. I think fifty-five, twenty, fifty, twenty-five, and twenty is not it. So what do you think?
Fifty, twenty-five, and twenty is...
Is it required, and that's not appropriate?
Brenda, why do we need R1 in that district?
Why do we need R1?
But why do we have R1?
Well, the idea between, with the, all the residential districts is that R1 is the least dense, and R3 is the most dense.
Right.
So typically, you would see R1, two, and three in a community. We don't necessarily need an R1, but we're just saying that's the least dense of our residential districts. And this area is probably the least dense of our residential districts, I mean, I, I think that it's not necessarily inappropriate that it's R1, saying it's least dense, but I think that the density they're saying, with the setbacks at least, is, is not.
And the, I think what Rich was pushing for was that the reason this was changed to R1 from R2 was to prevent the builder owners from having two-family houses, is that correct?
Multi-family.
Multi-family. Right, one and two families are allowed in R1 districts, but multi-family are not.
Right. So, given that, that may be a good, uh, thing to keep up, uh, if we make it R2, they could have multi-family.
Right.
And I don't know how many more buildable lots there are in here.
This map is not accurate, um, it's maybe a year or two old, so...
I think there's certainly four or five.
They said eight to twelve, somewhere in that, is left.
So the, the, um, the idea that you have put forth is that the fifty-foot setback is too much?
Yes.
And that twenty-five would be more appropriate? Right?
At least, yes.
At least meaning what?
Well, in a village setting...
Even less?
Maybe twenty-five is too far, I don't know.
Well, that's what we have in R2.
Right.
I would suggest...
I wouldn't go any larger than twenty-five.
Right. I mean, the, the, one easy thing to do is to say we should, we, we should make the R1 R2. The other is to change the characteristics of R1 to be more eco-friendly and, and, uh, village-friendly, so that people aren't so hidden from the streets, so there can be some neighbor-to-neighbor contact. So, the nature of the recommendations that the village board wants, R1 for, um, for what to do with this district?
What to do with the R1 district, what should it look like?
I would say the village board is looking for your input as to whether, uh, what Bren has suggested is the case, that the setbacks are too large now, uh, for a village rather than the town, that these might be more appropriate in a less dense area like the town, rather than the village, what's your take on that?
Yeah.
So these are, so we also have this R1, it's a, some of which is now...
For the farms, for the...
In the... Some, no, no, that's here, some of it is now town protected land, but some of it is not. So I would be reluctant to change R1 to R2, but I would suggest that we consider making it twenty-five feet setbacks on all sides. And that makes it almost the same as R2, except for the side yards, and the only reason I would make these larger is because the lot...
Lot size is larger.
Yeah, the lot size is larger, the front width has to be a hundred feet in R1 versus fifty feet in R2. I'd rather not, I mean, if we're gonna focus on this district and try to make more substantive changes, I'd rather do an overlay, as you recommend, um, but if we're just talking about modifying the setbacks, that would be my proposal, so just twenty-five feet everywhere.
Now, currently, the setback for the side is twenty feet, did you want, did you intentionally need to...
Okay, no, no, that's fine.
So twenty-five, twenty-five, and twenty?
Yeah, I would just cut the front yard in half, front yard setback in half, and...
Now...
Originally, that subdivision, green acres, it goes back to town property, because it's next to the village.
Okay.
When I owned it, and I did the original subdivision, that they built the first eighteen houses up there, the reason for those lot sizes had to do with the negotiation between the village and the town, and the annexation. That's the reason for those lot sizes, the way they were.
Big.
Big. Bigger lot sizes. I had argued for a walking village, they wanted big lots. I believe the village should be a walking village, I believe we should be able to sit on one front porch and talk to the neighbor on the next front porch. The, um, but that was part of the deal with the annexation, it was then called the ermine lands. And part of it came back that the town wanted to preserve bigger lots. Well, we agreed on this...
And how long ago was that?
Uh, too long ago, I'm old, Brenda. And it's changed over the years, and, you know, but the reason I built those houses on those sized lots and came up with that configuration was because of that restriction that the town had put on the annexation. Had I not done that, I would have come up with smaller lots, guaranteed. Not necessarily multi-family, but smaller little lots that people walk along the streets like Tom lives on, and like Grove Street, and like other streets, instead of these big, long, walking lots. The lots were so far apart that I was able to successfully argue only for the sidewalks down one side of the street, instead of two sides.
So, the reality now, in large, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that, from what I know of people who live there, is that it is very much a, a neighborhood, that kids go and play with each other, and, you know, neighbors see each other and stuff, and that... I would argue at this point, given that much of this is built out, that we don't need to make the lots smaller. Had, you know, if fifty percent of it hadn't been built out, then maybe that would be a good...
Oh, yeah, no, 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 that, that, that leftover, that's gone, I'll just give you the historical, so why was that size?
But I mean, despite that, I think it is, it's going to be a pretty new old neighborhood.
Yeah, we're happy with it, I lived, I lived in this home, right here, I used to live. Right here. And we love the neighborhood, my house got a variance to be built. The house next to me that's now, but it got a variance.
As I recall, there were many, many variances, mostly for solar...
This house got a variance, a lot of them got variance, most of the variances that I know of were for the, the fifty-foot setback.
Right.
You just can't, you just can't possibly comply with both the twenty-five foot and the fifty foot.
So Bren, what, um, what portion of the problems that we have with our current R1 district would be solved by changing the setback of the front to be twenty-five feet?
Well, I think that the main problem is that when we see the same variance coming over and over again to the ZBA, and being granted, we can see that there's something wrong with the code.
Right.
If, if that's not the intent of this district, then we need to change that, rather than continuing to let every lot get multiple variances.
Yes, but what portion of the problems that we have with this district would be solved by changing the front setback to twenty-five feet? I mean, would that, would that satisfy, would that make this be not something you have to worry about anymore?
I think that, as far as size...
No, I'm, here, here's the thing.
It's setbacks, yes.
I'm, I'm looking to avoid a related district.
I am too, I don't, I don't love them.
And, and I would like to satisfy the, the needs that, to, to remove the problems that make every, every new building need a variance. that make every, every new building need a variance. Pretty silly. And I agree with you that we should have the houses closer to the street anyhow. So if we were to say that we recommend to the village board that the front setback should be reduced to twenty-five feet from fifty, would that make you happy?
Yes.
Would it make anybody sad?
I don't see how it could. There are no houses that are fifty feet back on this road.
Okay.
In fact, I would argue there are no houses that are fifty feet back from the road in the village. I'm not positive, but I'm-
I, I live in one.
I, well, you have a private road, that's cheating.
Not on a private road.
It's cheating.
It's driveway. It's cheating. It's cheating. Okay.
What about the side and backyard, is that important to you?
I think that is less important and that is harder for me to figure out.
To be able to work with the current.
We had a problem with one house needing a deck variance up near yours. Yours?
Oh, no wonder. Okay.
But aside from that, I don't think we've got any other problems.
Granted a variance.
Well, granted, yeah.
Yes.
So I will make a motion to recommend to the village board that the R one district, um, setback for front yard be reduced to twenty-five feet.
I'll second that.
I'd like to hear a discussion. Any questions or additions or anything?
No.
Have a vote, call a favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else you wanna do with R one?
Not today.
Go for a raise while you're at it. You're a better fellow.
Yeah, you're, you're doing well.
Okay.
We're gonna recommend that?
Yes, please.
To the ZBA?
Anyone.
Anyone at all.
Good.
Hey, brother, thanks. That's a nice map, too.
Thanks.
Could I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
Multifamily versus you said two families are allowed. What does multifamily mean then?
Three, four, five.
You could have duplex.
Oh, a duplex is allowed.
Yeah.
But multifamily, does that mean rental? What does that mean?
No.
Three or more units in a building. Three or more in a building.
Three more.
Three or more dwelling units in a building.
Building units.
Welling units.
I see.
Kitchen, bathroom, living accommodations.
How does that relate then to, to renters?
It doesn't matter. Do you rent or don't rent?
As long as it's owner occupied.
No, you can't be dwelling used by the number of bathrooms, kitchens and, and living rooms and bedrooms. So you get a dwelling unit, that's both going to be, so you have two or three. Two is a duplex, three is multifamily, whether you're rented or not rented, owned or not owned.
Okay. Are there, so then a separate question then, are there, are there restrictions on rentals then? I mean, as far as owner occupied and not owner occupied?
No.
Not, not, not anywhere. Any of the houses in that neighborhood?
Anywhere in the village.
Could be rented out without the owner occupying the house?
Anywhere in the village.
That wasn't the case when that was originally designed. In fact, I got a big award from the DHCR for all accessory apartments.
Who you starting?
Look, it was my only time fame. I mean, you know.
It's over.
Glory days.
Over.
Glory days.
Brown eyed girl, come, come to the future.
Come.
Okay. George, I think, uh, I think we can, we can release you.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
See you next time.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Okay, um, we have planning board forums, very exciting. And, uh, minutes. Can we do the minutes? Wait a second. Can we do the minutes now for? Okay, thank you. Anybody have any, uh, corrections or modifications to the-
The reason why there's blue sections in the minutes is because I wanted to include your edits.
Okay.
So, that's fine.
Okay. So may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Sending.
The draft, planning board minutes for, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Stay absent.
Okay. How come the county planning board members can vote on minutes even though they're not in the meeting?
Because they don't read law too.
Oh. You don't need no stinking law.
We don't need no laws.
Badgers? No, no, stick of badgers.
We, we have, um, we have a request for Mr. Zerler to consider some other items this evening.
So I, the first one is on the application that we're gonna look at in our next meeting, PB fourteen oh eight, pencil bill.
Yes.
I would like to ask that either before the, that meeting or before we make any physical votes on this application that we have a site visit. Given the, that it's an undeveloped piece of land, it's, has a history, um, that, and I would, I'd like to actually go out there with the property owner and, and walk around and see what his plans are precisely and where it is in proximity to, to Mohawk Avenue. So that would be my request.
Okay. We can try to work that out?
Are you going all together? So we'll need to publicize it?
Um, you know, I forgot-
How do we get into open meeting law if we do that?
By not talking about it while we're there. We can ask questions individually. We can't discuss it. And, and that's it. We're not taking any action. So, I mean, we, we've done this before.
We can, and we would advocate that for having a meeting, such a time and place.
It's, it's really not a problem. I don't have that trouble. Morocco.
My recollection from conversation with Mr. Freeman, the ultimate meetings committee, is that, uh, a meeting, an official meeting that must be noticed is a meeting where a majority of the board gathers for the purpose of doing the business of that entity. So you would have to decide if a gathering, even if you are silent, is a meeting of a majority of the board to do the business of this entity.
Yeah, that's fine. I would say it is, but I presume if we notice it.
And absolutely, and if you notice it, you can do anything you want.
Yeah. I just-
Okay, uh, do you know when Mr. Cafrey is gonna be back in town? Do you remember anything about that?
Tomorrow, maybe Thursday?
Okay. So we'll, we'll talk a little about this.
Can, can I, do you know what the application is for?
We haven't, yes. Application is for a two-family home with a substantial amount of parking in front of the car.
Was asking us to review a site plan?
Yes.
Yeah.
And it's, you have to review it because there are more-
It was triggered by parking.
Yes.
So there's a building recommended that's in the rear. Parking's here, but, um, I think it's way off. Worrying to agree with me, it sounds like at least you are, it would be worthwhile. I would just like to actually walk the property in daylight and have him show us where things are gonna be, where the curb cut would be, where the buildings are, what the clearing would look like. Stormwater issues and, um, the traffic. So that we can see, I need to see all of it. It's just, given the things that have happened on that corner recently, it's not enough for me to just, um, do it here at the table. So, and if you decide you don't wanna do it, I'll go out there, I'll try to do it myself, so.
Well, we're always free to go individually, anything we want.
Yeah, as long as you're willing to do it, yeah.
And, yeah.
You're not gonna trespass, but.
All right.
So.
All right, so when, uh, when the applicant comes back, we could talk with him and see if he's willing to do it with us and then they can figure out-
Thanks, I appreciate it.
When, uh-
But before the next meeting, you wanna do it?
Um, ideally, and if that's not possible, to at least have set up a time with him to do it soon after the next meeting. Because I assume at the next meeting that most we would be making a determination to complete this.
And is there anything new with, with this property? Has he, has he changed anything from the original application or?
Nothing I don't know.
Okay, so. That's that. Okay, um.
Sorry, did I have a second?
Oh, yes. Hi, May.
I am May. It's, I know, that's why I have to- Update on the joint master plan.
You wanna go? Okay. Uh, next week we have interviews with three consulting firms. Uh, it is, I shouldn't have let you guys know. I'm sorry, that was my bad. Uh, it is next, it's the fifteenth, which I believe is next Wednesday. And it's, um, a six o'clock, seven o'clock and eight o'clock interview. Um, so from six to nine, we'll be meeting here, um, with as many board members as possible to interview the three firms that will be married and downed.
Great.
Next Wednesday, six through nine?
Yes.
Are they open to the, anybody who wants to sit in and serve or their property?
I'm not sure how the boards are going to handle it. It is a noticed meeting.
Oh, okay.
But I think some of it will need to be in executive session.
Okay.
Really?
Interviews would be an executive session, wouldn't you think?
Interviews with vendors? Oh, are these a salary position?
No, it's a consultant position. I, I don't know.
Okay.
I, you know, I don't know.
That's not your call.
Thank you.
Mr. Morocco, what do you know?
I don't know anything.
Nobody knows the troubles I'm seeing.
Um, I suppose that because this was a noticed meeting, right? That it would be an open meeting. Uh, as you know, uh, you can with certain motions go into executive session. And sometimes those motions can, uh, concern matters of employment. So there might be a reason to go into executive session, but it was my understanding that this was to be an open meeting.
Great, thanks.
Tom, uh, a while back we asked, I think we asked you to mention to the village board that we wanted to have a significant role in, uh, in the process.
And I have mentioned that to the board.
And is there anything coming?
Uh, yeah, I think the board, uh, received that, uh, favorably. There was no motion-
Right.
Or action, but, uh, when I said that, I believe, uh, when we were there at the time, it was received with, uh, I don't know if you'd say pleasure, but it was received favorably.
What can we do to make it pleasurable?
Don't go there.
He's still in California.
So, no can do.
I, I think we need to-
No can do. All right, I get the idea.
After we have, a- as soon as we have a consultant, then we have a process. And when we have a process, I think we need to have a body that's overseeing the process. And I think the planning board can either be the body, that was your recommendation, if you remember.
Be the body.
Or that you would be a significant constituent part of the body that oversees the lots.
Like the head.
Anyway.
That's what I'm talking about.
And serve ancient cultures, it could be the heart.
Yes.
Or some other woman.
Well, let's not go there tonight, please. Okay, um. No. No, we have to discuss planning board forums. This, this won't take very long.
Yeah.
You, you see, no, no, they're very nice.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion? They're very nice.
Thank you.
You mean like downhill, fast?
Basically, my question was, is there anything in the forums that you, uh, feel are, you have unanswered questions from applicants when they get to the table? So for example, the ZBA wanted to see the five criteria mentioned and answered by each applicant.
I'd have to say is use it for a little while before you agree with it and stone it. So before you go out and make five thousand copies of this.
Gotcha.
Let's use it a few times.
And I think you're intent was to make them fillable PDF forms?
Yeah, they're gonna be on the new website. Yes. Cause a lot of applicants ask if they can email an application and we say, come to the building.
We would love that. We would love that.
No, I agree. Let's see if I can get used.
Okay.
Look, they look good.
Um, before we entertain Rich's motion to adjourn, uh, I just wanted to mention that, um, we've, we've often discussed the fact that we do a lot of application work here. And reacting to applications and, um, and we bemoan the fact that we aren't doing anything like planning and proactive things. And, uh, Rich suggested a while back that we return to the, uh, format of workshop meeting, action meeting and so on. And I told him that I was not in favor of that because of the likely, um, lengthening of the process for approval. Because now we can take action at every meeting and, and it's just a lot easier and quicker for most applicants to be able to get something through, especially given the fact that many applications have to go to the county for approval. Um, they have a very rigid schedule and lead time and so on. So anyhow, as an alternative to that, what I want to suggest is to, um, have a separate agenda that we would keep as things that we would like to discuss and do that we can prioritize and attack each meeting where we have some excess time and energy. And if there are times when, for example, we have no applications, where we would normally say, meeting's canceled, we can meet for an hour or two. And, and chip away at the stuff and start actually doing some things that we would enjoy doing rather than telling an applicant, no, we're not gonna let you do that. So, that's what I would suggest. And in, in, uh, furtherance of that, I'd like to have you send me items that you would like to put on that wish list agenda. And, uh, we can discuss how to attach priorities to them and, uh, how much time we wanna spend at each meeting. What we would like to have is a, a sane, reasonable adjournment time. And I will say that I might be the earliest bird in the joint since I have to get up before six o'clock every morning at eight. Uh, but that's the, that's that's it.
A, a semi-relevant note is, um, and I wanted to tell you this before, but I forgot. Um, but each board member has training hours. And there is an MS four, um, meeting coming up, the first week of November. Uh, it'll be held here and Bren and a representative from Orange County will be hosting it. And it's a good way to get all your four hours out in one day.
You know, what I was going to, um, speak to you about Bren was that it would be good for you to be the keeper of the hours that we put in for training.
I've got it.
Yeah, I think we're both doing it.
Okay, good.
So we have your county hours.
Yeah, but there's more too. I've, I've, I've talked to you.
There's more? Oh, okay.
Yeah. But anyhow, um, so it is, it is a requirement that we have, how many hours a year? Is it two?
Four.
Four, four hours a year.
Four per calendar year?
Yeah. And, uh, whenever the county gives, whenever the county planning board gives, uh, some training, that's usually two hours. And, um, whenever I hear of them, I send them around and I think they're very good. Some of them are, yeah, but, um.
It's November five.
November five is the-
Is the MS four.
Okay, that's Wednesday.
That's Wednesday. And there's also a-
And what time is that?
We're not sure yet. Maybe- We're not sure yet, it may be inconvenient for some, because I think it's during the day.
There's, there's also a food security conference at Mohawk.
You mean like people who work?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
There's also a what conference?
Uh, food, food security conference at Mohawk Mountain House, November ten, uh-
Do you feel insecure with your food?
And that will go towards training hours, I believe.
Really?
But that's on a Monday, that's-
Every year, they, they hold a conference, last year it was on water, uh, this year it's on-
Food security?
Food security, they have some great panels speaking, panelists.
I got a banana in my pocket, I'm not afraid to use it.
Like bad shrimp? So, so you're only gonna have it during the day?
It wasn't my choice on that. I can, I, I can-
Wednesday, the fifth?
Yeah.
Well, I've got a county planning board meeting that night, so I can't make it that night. Unless, unless my alternate would like to go.
Except that I won't see the-
Oh, I see, okay. All right, so-
Okay.
We can start sending you more and more updates as it gets closer to January about possible training opportunities, if you'd like.
Right, okay.
And if you have trainings that you've already taken this year, then I can, you know where I am.
Pretty much. Okay, um, oh, you know, Tom, there is something about, um, we once asked, no, no, yes. We, we once asked the Village Board to, um, allow planning board training hours for anything that the county planning department either offers or recommends. And I don't know if that ever went anywhere.
I believe it did.
Yeah.
Is it already in place?
I think so.
I, I would like to see that and, and, you know, make sure, because it's tedious. It's tedious for every time some training thing comes up to then have to go on the agenda and- And for something as silly as this, it should be, uh, you know?
I don't know if it will be approved for, for this purpose, but there's also a main institute, uh, conference, three-day conference in Reinbeck, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth of this month, uh, with a pretty interesting panel of people, uh-
Yeah, Vandana Shiva speaking.
So, and, and there's a special water section of that, and that's why I'm, I'm going to that.
And there's the New York Planning Federation conferences.
Seven, seven, I mean, there's, there's a lot going on.
There's no shortage of it.
You should get, you should get recognition for what you do.
Okay, so, I, I have a recognition and premonition that there's gonna be a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Let's get out of here. Thank you, everybody.